You ready?
Uh, Teresa.
All right, let's hear it. Good morning. We're gonna call today's Board of Commissioners meeting to order. If you will, I'll ask everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
For the public, there's a copy of the Open Meetings Act located here on the north wall of the legislative chambers. In the back behind the partitions, uh, in the room back there is an electronic defibrillator in case anybody needs that for health reasons. Also, there, uh, yeah, I asked if you have any cell phones, electronic devices that you turn them off or that you would mute them. And with that, we're called to order the Board of Equalization meeting.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle? Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Duda? Commissioner Kraft? Commissioner Morgan? Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, June 25th, 2019. Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, July 23rd, 2019. It's a day for hearing certified assessments and corrections. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner, uh, Morgan. Please vote.
Commissioner Boyle's vote won't appear due to technical difficulties, but he does vote yes, as do the rest of the commissioners who are present. Motion passes.
Item C, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Equalization-related matters, not officially listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none. We will, before we go to the resolution D for action, I want to go to E, uh, discussion of LB 512 implementation slash process for reassessment of real property with the significant damage due to calamity. I ask Catherine to just explain this to the Board and make the Board aware of the process that we're gonna use after, uh, some conversation with the Assessor Register of Deeds office about the law change that went into effect. So, um, what Kathy's gonna do is explain it and make the Board aware of it. And if they got any questions on how we're gonna handle it, they can ask that from that. So, Catherine.
Good morning. So this year, the, um, state legislature passed LB 512, which provides an opportunity for property owners to initiate reassessment of their real property, um, if they sustain significant damage due to calamity between January 1st and July 1st. The significant damage would be defined as, um, exceeding 20% of the assessed value. And so for Douglas County property owners this year, what would be relevant would be the flooding in March that might be applicable for those property owners who sustained damage during the March floods. The state developed a Form 425 for property owners to declare their damage and submit, they must submit that by July 15th to both the county assessor and the county clerk. Here in Douglas County, uh, assessor and clerk came together and property owners could streamline that by emailing form425@douglascounty-ne.gov, and that information will get routed to both departments. There's additional information on the Douglas County assessor's homepage as well, including a link to the form. And property owners who are filing the form are encouraged to include documentation as to the extent of the damage. And, um, then this year, so the assessor's office will prepare a report of the destroyed property and present it to the Board of Equalization here. It'll be similar to the processes you might recall for overvalued or undervalued properties. And the Board must consider the assessed value of the destroyed real property by August 10th. So this timeline is concurrent to the annual valuation protest, so we're trying to consider the options. There might be some property owners who file both an annual property valuation protest and a Form 425. And so we're talking through how to address that, um, so the Board doesn't, and it doesn't approve perhaps two different values that might conflict. So the proposed process to reconcile those values for any prospective properties, um, that are duly affected, that is, both file the Form 425 for property damage and evaluation protest, is that we'll prepare a list of any potentially duly-affected properties. And the referees will look at that list first, um, and make a determination of value. And that'll be presented to this Board of Equalization to review and approve on July 30th. The assessor's office will then use those approved final values for the duly-affected properties in their, uh, final value, their property damage report that they provided the Board of Equalization on August 6th. And that August 6th will be the date when we're preparing all regular annual valuation protests for the Board as well. So that's the, the quick summary. I'd be glad to answer any questions, or I'm sure the assessor's office or clerk's office could speak to their roles as well.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you, and thanks for that update. Um, I, I just wanna try to get this as clear as possible for the viewing public. I had this discussion earlier with our clerk, Mr. Ash, relative to a couple things. I think, uh, July 1st was the deadline for filing your, your protest just on your valuation. Is that correct? Mr. Clerk?
Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And so this new flood damage, uh, I guess you would call it, uh, assessment offset, uh, damage, uh, credit that you would get on your property taxes. Filing for that, the deadline is July 15th. Is that correct?
Yeah, the, the Form 425, or the Report of Destroyed Real Property is the title of the form. That's gotta be submitted by Monday, July 15th.
So you could actually have, say, um, a protest filed saying, "I want my house valued, or I think my house should be valued at $175,000," filed as of July 1st in the regular protest process. And then file an additional form, what was it?
Uh, Form 425.
Form 425 saying, "I had additional flood damage for $75,000," file that by July 15th. And if you were sustained on both of those, come in at $100,000 valuation. Conceivably, that could happen. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Um, I think, uh, I believe there's representatives of the Assessor Register of Deeds office here. They could share with us. I, I believe, uh, I, I saw it in the, maybe Douglas County Gazette that the Assessor Register of Deeds was holding town halls in affected areas on this issue. Is that correct, Mr. Goodwilly?
Uh, Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor Register of Deeds. Yes, we, uh, held a town hall on Saturday, the 22nd, out in Valley at their disaster relief center. It was not as well-attended as we hoped, uh, but we did thank the City of Valley for making it available to us, yeah. So in order to get this form, I'm sorry, what's the number again?
It's Form 425, or Report of Destroyed Real Property form.
Okay. Uh, do we contact the, the clerk's office, the Register of Deeds office? Where do we go to get that? People can download that form from either our website or even the Department of Revenue website if they wish. I'm not sure if Dan's site will, will enable people to do that or not.
The county clerk's website and the Board of Equalization website, there's a Report of Destroyed Real Property tab, and it just routes you right to the assessor's page that has the information on, yeah, Report of Destroyed Real Property.
Okay.
And then we have, obviously, if someone, I'm sure the same with the assessor's office, if someone came by in person, we could certainly provide them a hard copy of the form.
Okay. And as long as that form is submitted or postmarked by July 15th, it's valid to, to get your claim. Is that, is that right? Yeah, we will review it. The, the one thing I would say, if, if this is for the purpose of the, the angry shut-ins that are watching the board meeting at home, um, the one thing I would suggest is, to the extent it's possible, don't just send the blank form. Attach pictures or insurance claim forms or estimates of repair, anything that can document the nature and the extent of the, of the damage that you have sustained. And here's why. Um, the deadline is the 15th. The Board has to decide by, on values by the 10th. You know, if we get an avalanche of these forms on the, on the 15th, that's a very short window for us to review the properties and their documentation and their damage before we would have to get our report on the Board's agenda to you folks. And so we would prefer to have as much time as we possibly can to do an accurate review of what the matter with the, you know, what the damage to the property was. I could envision some instances where we might need to actually go out and, and, and visit. But if you're buried under a couple of thousand, uh, applications, that two-week window is very, very, very short. And so the documentation, uh, would, uh, give us a really great assist in, in having some idea of the nature and extent of the damage. And so if there are people that are watching this either live or on the replay that are contemplating filing a Form 425, please attach whatever documentation that you can that, that would help explain to somebody what the damage to your property consisted of. Thank you, Mr. Goodwilly, Mr. Ash, and Ms. Hall. Thank you for that, uh, update. Thanks a lot.
Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. I, I just wanna point out to the world what a challenge this is going to be. I mean, I think the law is a good idea, but coming up, I mean, we've got, I've got farm ground that's still underwater. I don't know the damage. Hard to, hard to quantify what that damage is. It's not 20%. I will not be filing. I think to, even during the flood of 2011, when, I mean, it took, you know, over a thousand hours of sand clearing and everything, we didn't lose 20% of the value, so I'm, I'm guessing it's primarily just to structures, not to, to the raw farm ground.
Well, I, I, you know, I don't know. I think here in Douglas County, it'll be more structures than farm ground because that's the nature of the tax base that we have. But my understanding is there are some rural counties where the damage will be primarily to the, the agricultural ground. In fact, uh, we got an email from the Department of Revenue as part of a mass email to all assessment offices, and I think, uh, maybe clerk's offices too, but I don't know if Dan got this for sure. But apparently, there are some county board, uh, county boards out there that are valuing, uh, flood-damaged farm ground at zero. Well, okay, it might have lost a lot of damage, damage this year, but it's not gonna be worth nothing. And, and so the department was reminding people that, no, you, you really shouldn't be having parcels that have zero value unless they've been gobbled up by the, the river somehow, you know? So, so there is some discussion out in the more rural counties about how that temporary value for 19 that reflects the flood damage, uh, should look for agricultural land.
Even land that's under the river. I own 32 acres under the Missouri River. There's tax base on it. There is no, there is no land at zero.
No, there, there isn't going to be.
Okay, thank you. What a challenge, what a challenge this is gonna be for you guys. There're gonna be a, there has to be a lot of guesswork involved. There's no, no way around it.
You know, as an aside, this was an idea that would come up periodically. You know, about every five or 10 years, some town would get demolished by a flood or a hurricane or something, and people would complain because the assessment date is, is January 1, and there just was kind of a basic unfairness, uh, for somebody paying taxes on the full value of a property that a tornado had just scattered amongst several different counties. But nobody could ever get together on what it was going to look like. So, I mean, there's a lot of details here. So for example, if you have a natural disaster on July 2,
Right.
this law is not, not gonna help you.
Doesn't help you, right.
Not, not a bit. Um, and I think what they were trying to weigh was the timing of providing this kind of relief so that the county, uh, so that the political subdivisions that levy property taxes would have some idea by the time they do budgets and levy setting, what value they would have available to them. Because this is, this is a double-edged sword. The property owner's gonna get relief, and I think everybody's happy for that. But it's gonna show up in the value available to tax and, and what the tax revenues a political subdivision may be able to generate. And so, um, I'm kind of wondering, in those counties that had way more flood damage than us who have roads and bridges and stuff to repair, have no idea where the money's gonna come from to do that if they take a significant hit, uh, to their property valuation base. Actually, NACO probably had the best suggestion about how to do this, uh, but the legislature wasn't very interested. And that was to treat it like homestead exemption. The, the state would reimburse the political subdivisions for the temporary tax loss they were gonna get. But during the debate at the legislature, uh, the tone was, well, what can we do to help the property owners? And, uh, political subdivisions are gonna have to fend for themselves.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, no further questions. Thank you all. We'll go back up to, um, Item D, which is approving of the applications for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the county treasurer. What's the will of the Board? Uh, and that includes adjournment? Motion to approve Item D and adjourned by Commissioner Kraft, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Commissioner, there we go. Motion passes six to zero.
We're now called to order the Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle? Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Duda? Commissioner Kraft? Commissioner Morgan? Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, June 25th, 2019. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, July 6th, 2019. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Duda. Is that second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, um, Item 2 is consent agenda. There are 11 items, but let me begin by saying there's been a request to add a emergency item, and from my understanding, and the clerk's office can correct me on it, the request is, because I guess the applicant didn't, wasn't aware of, we wouldn't be meeting for the next two weeks, so by the time this happens, it'll be out of date before the, uh, liquor commission. So, um, I'll read this and then see where the Board's will is to declare an emergency for it. So, uh, the item is approval of a special designated liquor license for the Parliament Pub, Inc., 16939 White Plaza, Suite 153, for Culture Con Music and Arts Festival event to be held 8:10, 19, 2:00 p.m. at 11:59 on, um, August 11th, uh, at the River West Park on, uh, 23301 West Maple Road. What's the will of the Board to declare an emergency and add the item? Motion by Commissioner Boyle to declare an emergency and add this item, and seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Clerk is ready? Please vote. Okay. So-
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Well, let's do this on this item?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do this then. One, so we have now 12 items on the-
Well, I, I still need his vote, Commissioner Kavanaugh's vote, to add, for, for that emergency.
If you want this on, then I'll give you the question on that.
Yeah, I'm gonna vote for it. I just wanted to ask one informational question on it.
It's not officially on yet till we vote it on.
Okay, okay.
Motion passes six to zero.
There's 12 items, uh, on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner Duda, seconded by Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yeah, I was just wondering, this comes under Culture Con Music and Arts Festival. I don't know if there is anyone here that could tell us what the Culture Con Music and Arts Festival is, but I'd like to hear about it. Sounds interesting.
Hi.
Hi.
On behalf of Parliament Pub, um, I don't know if you're familiar, we have the two locations here in Omaha. We do entertainment, DJs, bands, all the time, and one of our DJs is very successful in promoting his events, and he is throwing his first annual Culture Con Festival, which is gonna include DJs and bands from all over the country, music, art vendors, things like that, out at River West Park, and has asked us to do the liquor license for that. And, um, we're really excited for that, and I apologize for the delay. We could've done it on the 23rd, but that only left us a couple days to get to the state, so there's no room for error. So I asked if we could put it on today's agenda.
That sounds great. And is it a one-day event?
Yeah, so it's actually gonna go till, from 2:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m. The, we have the liquor license till 2:00 a.m. or 1:45, you know, for people who hang out afterwards. But, uh, it's in the Douglas County, but it's on the Elkhorn River, so they have to have a, um, music has to stop by 11:00, a curfew.
So this is, uh, 2:00 p.m. to 1:45 a.m. On what day of the week is that?
It's a Saturday night.
Saturday, August 10th.
Yes.
And what's your address?
Parliament's River West.
The, where this is gonna occur?
It's River West Park, which is 23301 West Maple. It's on the Omaha side of the Elkhorn River on Maple Street.
Sounds great. Thanks.
Thanks.
With that, there's motion to second for the consent agenda. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Uh, we'll now go on to recognitions and proclamations. Item A is recognition of the following county employee retiring, Ms. Sherri Nair. She retired from the Douglas County Health Department after 22 years of service, and Ms. Nair is not here. And I wish her well in her retirement. Um, for those who may not know, she's been working for the last years with the STDs, uh, situation in the county, and, uh, wish her well. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item 4, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Equalization, I mean, a Board of Commissioners-related items that are not on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none. We'll go on to Item 5, presentations. Letter A is the Aflac Update Employee Benefit Technology Presentation.
Hi, how are you?
All right. Want to state your name and address for the record?
My name is Kai Hand. I work at Aflac, and, uh, our corporate office is in Columbus, Georgia. It's my first time getting the opportunity to address you guys, and we wanted to talk about some of the changes that we are looking to make in our Aflac relationship. So I put together a slide deck for you. I hope you can see. I know that this monitor had been a little awkward before. Is it working okay now? Okay, terrific. Just as a brief agenda item, I, this is just what we're gonna be covering today. We'll, we'll go through the slide deck here. I'm gonna try and make it quick, 'cause I know there's a lot to do today. My name is Kai Hand. I'm a Territory Sales Manager with Aflac. I've been with Aflac 12 years. My job is to look at specially, specific large cases, counties and municipalities, from coast to coast on Aflac's perspective, past and present. Also with us today is Dave Beck and Annie Beck. They have been part of your sales and service team since 2000. And we have Mike Pietro, who's in charge of our broker sales consultants. So those are the teams that are here with us today representing Aflac. I wanted to start backwards a little bit and talk a little bit about Aflac's strength and stability. I know we've had a relationship with you guys for a significant amount of time, but I, I wanted to take a moment to kind of talk about where we are as a company and where we've come from. You can see there are a lot of, we have dozens of, of accolades, but some of the most important I've listed here. We also, the slide deck is, is a second old, 'cause on 2018, we also got, um, an Ethical Companies Award, which makes us a 14-year award winner of being an ethical company. I do believe that currently, we are still the only insurance company that appears on the ethical board list from EpiSphere Magazine. The other one that I wanna make sure I point out is, it's the last tab. About four or five years ago, they started monitoring companies on the Fortune 500 list to see who was actually a green company and who was paying attention to that and paying it forward in that space. We maintain a very solid position as a top 50 company domestically, uh, in that green space. If we can email it, or sort it, or, or find a way to not have to print it and, and still communicate our messaging, we're doing that in a very successful way. So I wanted to make sure that I pointed out to you guys that, uh, our, our strengths aren't just financially. They're also emotional for us and how we are treating our communities. Philanthropic commitment. Us as a company, a lot of people know Aflac 'cause they know the duck, but what they're not aware of is all of the philanthropic contributions that we make to societies. From a local level, we're supporting things from band drives, little leagues, even lemonade stands. From a state and local, uh, from a lot harder, higher level, like a federal level and a state level, on a corporate perspective, we are donating, and you can see from the slides, since just from 1996, we've donated over $100 million in continuing the fight against cancer. Every time you see one of those little ducks that someone has, one of our field agents has purchased it, and the contributions to that go to the Children's Cancer Society of Atlanta. From a corporate initiative, we sponsor the other half of it, matching funds 100%. And just again, since 1995, we have donated over $100 million. It's a need-based organization, so depending on what you have or don't have, if you have a severity of a cancer episode for a child, we are willing to foot the bill for them as need-based. So I just think it's important that you know who you're in business with, because again, we've had a long relationship with you guys. I just wanted to make sure, to remind you some of what we're doing to help move the world forward. Claims. The most important thing I think any insurance company does is pay its claims. From an Aflac perspective, we are still paying our claims faster and better than anybody else in our space. As a matter of fact, just in the 2018 statistic alone, Aflac pays a claim every second of every day. Again, it's the most important thing any insurance company does, is pay its claims. Specifically to you, I wanted you to see how we're doing. I've broken them out by policies so you can see. Here's a list of the policies that we currently offer. Although we've been offering them for a while, I just wanted you to have a short look backwards to see. Because again, keeping with that claims experience, we wanna make sure that we are delivering quickly and everything we said that we would. I wanted you to see, this slide represents money just from January 1st of 2016 to date. So we, on average, are paying just shy of a half a million dollars a year to your employees who put in for claim. And so I broke it out so you could see exactly how it works. So Aflac, as you may know, is a supplemental insurance company that pays people directly if they get sick or injured. We also have a wellness benefit strategy that sits on most of our policies, where we will pay you to stay well if you go in for a doctor's exam and annual physical or cancer screening. Most of our policies have a wellness benefit attached with it. So I just, again, wanted you to see from a, a historical point of view, not just who we are as a company, but who we are directly for you, and how our company directly affects your people and your employees. Here is our success story with your company in particular. In 1981, the credit, the county had a credit union that brought us in, and we started enrolling people and protecting people from the credit union. In 2000, Douglas County offered a payroll slot if we could get 5% participation or more. We did much better than that and have continued to do much better than that, and we've been on payroll as a provider for you guys since 2000. Also in 2000, Annie and Dave Beck came onto the scene and started helping with you, with what we were doing with your company and your employees. In 2019, Mary, who had initially opened the, your account in 2018, had retired. I think most people might even remember her. And Dave and Annie took over full-time, uh, of the, of the representation of Aflac and working with your people. When people talk about representation, you know, we talk about the claims experience, how important it is, how much they're getting paid. Is it fast? Is user experience good? And that's a cornerstone of our company. But I also think that the interface between our company and your employees is, is intrinsically important, 'cause people may not know that they're being owed money. Our support system in Annie and Dave has been tremendous. They are the complete face of our organization for all of your employees on all shifts, all hours of the day. They've been coordinating face-to-face meetings with all of your departments, again, at all shifts, because it may not be a convenient time for us. It may not be at 9:30 in a boardroom. It may be at 9:30 at night, and it may not even be in a boardroom at all. It may be on a street. So our agenda is to make sure that we are continuing to deliver to our promise that we made to you in 81, which is that we would be there for your employees when it was convenient and appropriate for them. Annie and Dave Beck continue to do that job for us. They manage claims for our current employees, for past employees, even retired employees who've maintained their, continued on with their policies. They work closely with HR to ensure that Aflac is staying relevant. Every year or two, we come back to HR and say, hey, here are some new things. Does this make sense? Does it not make sense? We've introduced group products, we've looked at value adds, we continue to try to make sure that we are maturing our relationship and giving you the best and cutting-edge opportunities that are currently in this space. From the FICA savings, every policy that's currently on payroll that has the ability to pre-tax, that we are pre-taxing, you can see, we currently have about 48 percentage of the people who have policies that are pre-taxed. You can see the number when it is there, but more importantly, just by offering these policies, the organization is saving almost $50,000, $48,000 a year in your FICA tax, because it saves you, it saves money for your organization, it also saves money for your employees. And I just wanted you to see that not only are your employees saving money and getting a better breadth of protection, but also you guys are saving money by offering Aflac. So, when we talked about what we could do next and what would make the most sense for us, like what we could advance that might be a better fit, and one of the things that's happening in the benefit space is people are wanting to enroll electronically, and we presented a couple different options, and this was the option that surfaced to the top for us. Aflac's made a relationship with a technology company. We offer technology, we're not a technology company. We've made a relationship with a company who built some technology for us, and we have offered to build a site from scratch. Here are some of the pieces that I wanted you to see that I, so just from a high-level perspective, what I'm hoping we'll do today is show you how this platform works, and see if we could get some support from you on how this moves forward and why it's important to you and to your employees. From an ease of benefit visibility, when somebody logs on, it shows them all of their benefit options, as you can see from the screen. There will be a yellow tag at the top of any one of the black markers that shows what they currently have. So if somebody wants to go online to enroll or sits with someone, and they want to see what their benefits look like, this is the screen that they will see. To the right, you can see that there's another tree. It lists all the benefit options. Now, not to get too deep into technology, however, this screen populates based on the census that we get from HR benefit that tells us what you're benefit-eligible for. So you may have legacy policies, you may have new policies, you may, so any one of this only populates based on exactly what we're told to populate it for. So you, as an employee, only see what you're eligible for, including retiree. So anything that you're benefit-eligible for will populate on the screen, and your tree, which sits to the right, will again populate. It also keeps a running tab for you. So as you make a decision, as you can see, and if this is, you can see it in your handouts, as you can see, when you pick, when you make a selection, if it's just for you, or if it's for you and a spouse, or it's for, it's for you and children, it populates instantly, as you can see, so that you can see if you have a spouse's name who may not be spelled correctly, or may not be your current spouse, or you may have children on there that have aged out. It gives you again, an opportunity to continue to correct, to make sure that our benefits are specific to you. On the right, the running tab keeps it so you can see every election you make as you make it, from a pre-tax and a post-tax and a total. So it's very clear to the employee, every single decision that they make, any evidence of insurability, anything that they need to make decisions based on what their family and themselves need, all gets based on this site. From an administrative point of view, a lot of times, when you have a significant employee base, herding cats can be a challenge. In this slide, you can see what the administrator and broker has access into. From the dial in the center, it has a live, up-to-date tool that'll show you every second of the day when someone logs in, if they've completed, if they haven't. Sometimes, technology can be rough, and someone will think that they've completed and made all the elections, but they didn't click sign and submit. I can see, you can see, HR can see, your broker can see, full visibility as to where every single person is. It also keeps an exact tracking, so every time the employee goes in and requests a decision that may be made, or asks for a change, it has a timestamp. So if someone doesn't remember if they've put their children on their dental policy, or if they come back to HR and said, no, no, I'm sure I did this, we can pull up, as HR and broker can also, full visibility into the site at any time. The site also gives us the ability to pull out all data in any form that you need. So if you want to see how many people who have full families didn't elect for family coverage, you can pull that report from here. You can pull any report that you want. We have 2,000 pre-built reports, as well as over 100 lines for specialized reports that we can build in for you. When somebody finally makes their elections, and they've made their decisions, and they're now done, what they'll get is a clear, concise benefit report. You can see at the top right of your top left, where it says your logo here. Every single one of our screens where you see a white space or your logo here gives us the ability to co-brand. So if there's any messaging that you want to be sending, whether it's to your retirees, or to your new employees that want to go on here, it can be welcome screens, we can add in any messaging that you're trying to deliver onto this site for you. But at the end of their enrollment, this is what they'll get. They'll get a complete summary page, which we can print out and/or email, depending on what they'd like, but for sure, they'll get it by email.
Huh? You do know that no one can read that at home, don't you?
That's why you have a handout, I think.
I don't want the handout. People at home can't read that.
We, on the slides that I picked, they're smaller slides. I don't know how to blow it up bigger for you.
Well, you need to learn, because that is useless, okay? I'm just being candid. It's a waste of time to do that.
Okay. How would you like me to deliver this information?
I don't know. It's your job, not mine. You're the, you're the expert. I just had to tell you, you can't read that. So the people at home have no clue what you're talking about, and people in the audience can't see it either.
Okay. I'm happy to blow up the slides and send the deck again, if you think that that would be helpful.
Don't bother. Do it right the first time.
Okay. So the summary report is what everybody would receive at home by email. And that's our presentation of what we are looking to do for, to move this over to a platform for your employees. I think it gives people visibility for 24-hour access. They can go online at any point in time and see any of their policies or any of their elections. Are there any questions?
My question might be more to Karen. I know that we have Blue Cross Blue Shield that was selected by this board, and I'm not the most, for sure, knowledgeable person on this. But I'm wondering, how does this work? In other words, we have the Blue Cross Blue Shield most of our employees, if I'm correct. So why would we be doing this if you are under Blue Cross Blue Shield?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. This does not replace Blue Cross Blue Shield. Blue Cross Blue Shield will continue to be our medical plan. Basically, what Aflac is presenting today is they will continue to offer the programs that they've offered in the past, which is the volunteer programs that the county board has supported us, as Kai pointed out, since 1981. What this is doing is it's providing us with a platform to deliver all of our benefits, including our medical, our dental, in a way that is more user-friendly to our employees. Currently, when an employee wants to make a benefit change, say, to their Blue Cross Blue Shield plan, maybe because they've gotten married or they've had a child, what they end up having to do is fill out a form and send the form to us, and then we have to enter the form into the system. And then, then any changes in deductions comes through payroll. This platform, the software platform, will now make it so much easier for employees, because they'll be able to go online, either from their computer at work, or at home, or from their phone, using a mobile app. And they'll be able to make a change to their dental, their vision, their medical, any other plans that they have that we offer, if they have a qualifying life event, like a marriage. And they'll be able to do it all online in their timeframe, and then the documentation that we request, say, if we need a marriage license, which we usually request to make sure that they're truly married, then they can just take a picture with their phone and upload it, versus us, versus them having to make a copy and get it to us. So this is going to streamline the process. It'll make it much more user-friendly for the employees. And Aflac's offering this service as a partner to us, it, we looked at systems like this just to purchase on our own. Excuse me. The cost of that, it runs about $150,000 to $175,000 a year to offer this kind of platform. Aflac is offering this at no cost to us for three years. The data remains ours. If three years from now, we decide, or a year from now, that this isn't working, and we want to pursue something else, we get the data back at no cost to the county. And if we are pleased with the platform, which they, which Kai has said, they're actually building a custom site for us, which is very rare to occur. Most of the time, you just purchase, and then you have, purchase a software platform, and then you have to make your systems work with it. So the advantage to us is that we're gonna have a much more user-friendly system for our employees, and employees are gonna be able to enroll in benefits when they're first hired. Which right now, we have to have them go through orientation, and if they don't make it to an orientation, then we have to have them fill out paperwork, and they can actually do this process as soon as they're offered a job by us. They can do it even before they start their very first day of employment, which is what a lot of companies do. That's a best practice. And we'll also be able to use it for open enrollment, and our open enrollment system right now is not the most user-friendly, but this system will pretty much bring us into the 20th century, 21st century. Because we're a little bit behind.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes, sir. And I, I'm not sure. I might have misinterpreted Commissioner Morgan's question. Not the platform, but the Aflac policy.
Correct.
Is that why you were asking?
Right.
Okay. Why do we have the supplemental policy?
Oh, we offer the supplemental policies as an additional benefit to the employees. Thank you for clarifying that. The Aflac policies provide coverage for individuals that may have cancer, that may have a disability, that need to have, extend a hospital confinement. They offer additional dental coverage, riders, and those supplemental policies, and those policies are advantageous to our employees, because those policies pay them additional cash above and beyond what would be covered by our medical plan. So I'm just gonna use myself as an example. I had a surgery last year. I have a policy. I have the short-term disability policy. And so when I had my surgery, I was off work for six weeks. Yes, I had some sick leave available that I was able to use, and fortunately, I was able to work from home some. So the nice thing about it was, is that my insurance, you know, you have a deductible, you have a copay, you have coinsurance, that are not covered by the county's policies. So I received a check for $1,000 that helped offset those costs for me. So as an employee, that's a really wonderful benefit for me, and so, and these benefits are voluntary.
Right. So is that $1,000 based upon the number of days, or degrees? Okay, so it's a per day, it's a per day deal?
Yes.
Depending, and the cost is straight across the board, no matter what, whether you're in a car accident, or cancer, or whatever, correct?
Right. The policies are set, those are communicated to the employees. Aflac meets with employees that are interested. They have, in the past, as Kai said, it started with Mary America, and then it continued forward with the Bex. And they come in and they meet with our employees periodically.
Thank you. Yeah. More detail than I think we're asking for.
Okay.
I do have some other questions, because I was just following up on his, I knew what you did, and I know why we do it. Adam, is it?
Kai.
Kai. Kai, okay. You mentioned the $100 million philanthropic.
Yes, sir.
How much of that is spent in Douglas County?
I will tell you that from a, from a perspective, a local perspective here, that we look at, we've been looking at local hospitals here to make relationships with. We launched a new duck, and we, that we've been looking specifically at cancer centers. So we started with cancer centers domestically, and now we're drilling down into places where we've got great relationships at local hospitals. So I can't speak to where we're at today with that, but I know that we've already been in contact with some of the biggest hospitals in the state.
But that doesn't mean you've given anything to Douglas County.
I don't, I can't speak, I don't, I would hate to misdirect that, so I'm not, I'm not sure.
Could you find out for me, please?
I'd be happy to.
Because I realize nationally, it does good, but I'm local.
I understand. But you also understand that if somebody locally had a cancer episode with one of their children, they would be eligible to go to the cancer center?
Oh, I know that. I know that.
I'd be happy to look into it.
And you'd pay the claim, the per diem?
No, no, no. This was, our philanthropic commitment is that if you unfortunately had a child or a grandchild that had suffered a cancer event, and they applied to go in based on their cancer need, we accept children domestically. It wouldn't matter where they were.
Okay.
Anybody would be eligible to apply for it.
That clarified a lot for me. Thank you.
So the, just that it's based in Atlanta, we fly children in and out every day.
Okay. Hi, thank you very much.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. And Kai, thanks for this presentation. I appreciate it. And Dave and Annie, thank you for all you do. Great to, keeping us informed, and a lot of people here, so it's a full-time job to just keep us up to speed. I appreciate it. Thanks. This overview, where it shows that we have 2,500 eligible employees, and it looks like, you know, a little less than half, 48% are actually participating, has a, an average weekly premium per participant of $10.21. Okay. So I, as an individual, can get the, the full array of coverages here for $10.21, or how does that work?
So from an Aflac perspective, all the policies that we offer, we offer individually. You don't have to get one to get another. We offer them à la carte, because you may have an interest in heart attack and stroke, and not cancer, or you may have an interest in cancer, or you may have a young family, and you're interested in some additional accident support. So we offer them individually, based on what you would like. We don't, what we try to avoid is having one plan that everybody had to participate in. So anybody who's interested in additional protection, they are offered them à la carte, and they can take whatever is appropriate for themselves or their families. You also don't have to get full family coverage on every single policy. Like, you may have a younger family, or kids that play sports and want family coverage in the accident, but you may only want heart attack and stroke coverage for yourself and/or your spouse. In the cancer policy, because we believe so strongly, and it's, if you pick up a policy, we're already gonna give you children protection at no additional cost. So we believe in that so strongly, and so, and obviously, our, we match the national guidelines for children as defined as up to age 26, regardless of whether they live in the home or not.
And that brings up another question. In addition to that, where does this factor in pre-existing conditions?
So that's a great question. I appreciate that. Different policies behave differently. Our accident policy that we've been offering has no pre-existing condition. So our heart, our heart attack, pardon me, our cancer has to be, is five years treatment-free, and if you are treatment-free for five years or more, you're offered a brand-new policy. We don't recognize any use-it-or-lose-it clause, so we don't ever, after somebody is a policy holder, I know that it's commonplace, if you have a heart attack and stroke plan with us, and you unfortunately suffer one of those events, it's paid out, and then the policy's terminated. Our policies never terminate. As long as the policy holder is interested in keeping the plans, they will continue on, including after their, their employment here, even through into retirement. So none of our, none of our policies have a use-it-or-lose-it clause. The cancer does have a 30-day wait when you first sign up, and that is if you are five years or more treatment-free, if you've unfortunately suffered a cancer event prior. Heart attack and stroke has the same thing. We look back to see what's happened in the prior year. Our hospital plan also has a one-year black, six-month forward look. Pregnancy has a, they're a pretty standard, industry standard, I think it's a 10-month pregnancy hold on the, on the hospital. So if you're currently pregnant, it wouldn't cover that event, but if you were to deliver 10 months or longer, it would be a covered event for us.
Thanks a lot. Thanks for this update.
I'm happy to help.
Can you define treatment-free?
Sure. So if you are receiving anything that's a prescription, that is a direct result of the cancer episode, that would be in, in treatment.
Okay, so it's not really pre-existing conditions, you know, if you have a heart problem and you're taking a prescription, then that wouldn't be, you couldn't, wouldn't be eligible?
You would be, so I'm, I'm sorry, I thought we were, so in the cancer policy, it has a treatment-free for five years, in order for you to be rebenefit eligible as a new policy holder. In the heart attack and stroke plan, those don't have pre-existing conditions in that regard. There are half a dozen medical questions that range from diabetes, currently in treatment for something.
So I guess my question is, if a person has diabetes, diabetes, and is being given prescription for it, and being treated for diabetes, is that person, is that?
It's not an automatic DQ, no.
Okay, but their questions could disqualify them?
They could, yes.
Okay, all right. I want to ask you about the contract. It's three years free?
What we are offering is at no cost for three years, with a three-year option for three years more. So we know that it's expensive, and we aren't asking for you guys to pay for it. We're willing to shoulder the expense of it, because we think it's important. Also, I know that Karen was very gracious to talk about how it affects your employee base, which it does, but it also, I think, affects both sides of the house. It makes it streamlined for everybody.
Well, let me ask you, after three years, what happens?
We, if, we will sit. We, if we will sit down and find out what you want difference, if there's any corrections you made, and we'll extend it for another three years.
I'm just trying to get, when you extend it, is there any cost?
No.
Okay. And when do you start charging for it?
We don't anticipate that we will.
Okay, so it's free forever?
It is free for three years, with a three-year option. That's our guarantee today.
All right. And information that you get, do you get social security numbers or anything like that?
Yes. The census that populates, based on our secure site, we have, I think, 50 million people that currently have some form of data that's houses in our company.
Okay. I'd like to ask you not to have the social security numbers of our employees in your data. I don't, I don't like that, because it's, you could be hacked, and all of our employees would be exposed. I would like to see you remove our social security numbers from that. And then I want to, was there actually a contract that was written and signed? Did the county attorney look at it?
No, I think we were looking to...
This is just a presentation today, commissioners. If we decide to use the platform, we'll discuss with the county attorney the necessary documentation that needs to occur.
Okay, that's good. Just want to be sure, but please take the social security numbers out. That's just way too dangerous for us. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Social security numbers out?
We can customize the site to whatever specifications. It's a rules-based site, so we do it based on what you tell us to do.
Great. Thank you. That's what I'd like to see.
With that, we're going to item six, which is the, which is public hearing. Item A is Class C dash 12309A liquor license for beer, wine, and still spirits, and Class K catering license for Villas Point Lodging LLC, doing business as Aloft Omaha West 215 South 181st Street, Omaha, Nebraska, Douglas County. Management application is Andrea Homestead. Is she in? Okay. Okay, let me explain the situation, Andrea. We have, my understanding is, there was a form sent out, where you all had labels, but we don't have the confirmation of the notification being sent out.
Correct. Andrea Homestead, 8015 North 28th Avenue, Nebraska Title, is working on that right now.
Okay, let me, let me hold that then. This is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing. You want to, I guess this is the situation, you got any, you want to explain if you got any timelines or anything on that? Because this process can be waived, but I think you need to explain fully to the board what's going on, if they do, because my understanding, if, if this doesn't happen, you'll be kind of off with the timing or what you need for this, so...
Like timelines as to when Nebraska Title is sending those out?
Well, the fact is, is that, you want to explain the deadline with the Liquor Commission when they do this?
Well, Dan S., County Clerk, and Ellen Sexer might help me out here, but I think what Commissioner Rogers was getting at, is if we, we don't meet again until July 23rd, and we're fearful that that actually goes beyond the Liquor Control Commission's deadline for you to get the application into them. Is that, am I speaking correctly to that?
Yes. Ellen Sexer, Douglas County Clerk's office. Yeah, we don't meet until the 23rd, and the Liquor Control Commission needs the board's recommendation by the 22nd, is all, and we don't have the notarized affidavit that the letters have been sent out, the notification has been sent out that the public hearing was today, so that's the issue.
And technically, by a policy that we have, we need that to go. So if you want to explain, you know, if you're under any time sensitivities or anything like that, so the board can consider if they want to waive that or not, if you're not under any time application for this event, then traditionally, we've held it over till we've gotten those in, and we have not got that in.
Correct. I guess I'm not understanding really the question.
Yeah, basically. When's your event?
It's not an event. It's a, it's a business that's going to be open.
Okay.
And we will not be open July 23rd. It's still under construction. It's a hotel that'll have a bar.
When will you, when you, when will you be open?
I am being told probably October.
Okay. So if we wait until we get the affidavits back in, that won't cause you any difficulty?
Correct, at the end of this month?
Yeah.
No, not at all. Not at all. I was just told to come today as well, to let you know that it was happening, knowing that it could either be approved today, or I may have to come back for another meeting as well.
Then I would plan for the 23rd. My hope is, we should have that by then.
Chair Rogers, if I may. So where the deadline comes in, there's no event, but on the application, the 45-day deadline, so the date that the Liquor Control Commission received this, I don't know what you want to call it, application, it was June 5th, so that means by July 22nd, they need to have a recommendation from Douglas County, so that's why, even though there's no event, they're not going to be open, because of when it was submitted, we're afraid she might have to start all over again if we don't take action on it today.
What's the rule of the board? The board can waive?
And there was, just to reiterate, they did provide us, you know, addresses of folks that they had contacted. We just, part of the board's policy is a notarized statement saying we have done so, and that part, we don't have. But there is a list of, they did provide a list of people that they had sent a notification to about the hearing today.
Commissioner Morgan and Craft.
The only thing I wanted to state is, because my company had the listing on this a few years ago, Dr. Ganghar, I assume, is who's involved?
He is.
And they're building a hotel there. I feel like, because we sold it a couple of years ago to him, might be a conflict if I was to vote on this, but it is supposed to be a very, very nice hotel, and I think they were using Willie Thiessen a little bit as a consultant in what they're going to do out there with the food and so on. But I feel it's best if I abstain from commenting further or voting on this matter, just to be cautious. But I know you're building a very nice hotel. I've seen it under construction.
Thank you. Commissioner Craft.
Yes. Not having ever applied for a liquor license, is there a fee you pay when you apply?
Yes.
How large is that fee?
Oh, I'm trying to think, maybe $100 for the application fee, and then I believe it's like $400 or so after, depending on the catering rider that I've added on.
So if you were to be delayed and have to start the process over again, you'd only be out $100, correct?
I'm thinking off the top of my head that, yes.
If I may, Commissioner Craft, part of the documentation shows that it's a, they paid a total of $512.45, $400 for the retail liquor license, and $100 for the catering license, and then there's just $1,245. And I don't know if it's taxes or just a fee that pay port, what Nebraska uses for the, accepting the payment. But anyway, the total they paid for this was $512.45.
I'm conflicted, because the rule of law versus our ability to waive this.
And it's not hard law, it's a policy.
It's a policy. Okay. I heard you say policy, but I interpreted as law.
Perhaps, if I may, Chair Rogers, I mean, if you all are, maybe you are, I'm telling you things you already know, but the notification policy, that's the county's, that's not state law, that's the county's deal. So that's why you're able to waive it, if you want to.
Thank you. And I, I very honestly sense it's a hotel doubt if we'd have people protesting. So I'm going to just stop talking, let others talk.
Commissioner Duda?
Andrea, when did you send notices out to the neighbors, and how many did you send out?
The title company did so.
They, all right.
Nebraska Title themselves do it. I do not know the number.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Okay. Commissioner Boy.
I wonder if we could accept the application that we have, contingent upon the proof that the mailing was completed? And then, is there any way we can do that, so that we can let this proceed?
We'd first have to move to waive the policy.
Okay, well, I would, I would move to waive the policy.
Well, hold that point. So technically, we're in the public hearing. If there's no more, we'll...
Just to answer Commissioner Duda's question, there was 31 properties contacted, or on the list they provided.
And these were sent out in the time of the election?
As far as we know.
The thing is, the verification.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Correct, yeah.
We will close the public hearing as a motion by Commissioner Boyle to waive the policy and approve the...
Application.
Application.
Yes. Contingent upon the proof from the title company that the mailing was completed.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Craft? Please vote.
I vote yes.
Commissioner Morgan abstains, all our commissioners voting yes.
May I ask a question? When, when will the applicant have to come back, when she, when she has proof that the mailing was done?
If we get proof, she's good.
Pardon me?
If it comes in, which we anticipated will, we're good.
So she doesn't have to come back?
You just send it directly to Ellen.
Yeah, I was going to say, Ms. Homestead, you could send it to Ellen, and we'll give this to Sharon Burke as well, so...
You can do something.
Good luck.
All right. Thank you.
I'll buy a tank of gas and come out and see you.
Do you need to vote, ma'am?
We did.
Yeah.
Policy, but did that include the proof?
We moved to waive the policy and approve the contingent on the proof that she did.
I thought it was a combined motion.
It was. Item A is Finance Committee. Item one is Budget Report.
I think as presented, and I think it's July 30th, Joe Lorenz can correct me, that we'll probably be voting on the budget. Joe, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
With that, we'll go to item G, which is the Human Resource Committee. Item one is the Weekly Personnel Report, as submitted. Item two is Legislative Report, right now, which there is none, but I'd like to note